Call the Finance Committee to order, and we have a huge agenda tonight. Three items. We like it that way. I'd like it that way. And the first item I have is Temporary Resolution 40-24, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Prepare and Submit an Application to Participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Program and to Execute Contracts as Required. That's coming from Water and Wastewater.
Absolutely. Yeah. Superintendent Nixon, would you like to speak on that?
Or Darren, whoever.
Darren will be next. Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Denise sent out an email last week. Hopefully you all got it. But this is will allow for funding of our sludge biosolids facility. It's next door to the Lawrence Street wastewater plant across Baldwin Run. It's a building that we dewater and lime stabilize the sludge. It was constructed in the mid 90s, and it's pretty wore out now. A lot of moving parts. So it's a rough environment dealing with sewage sludge every day. This probably should have been done several years ago, but too many other projects took precedence. So we're right now, we selected Arcadis to do the design. We're doing some preliminary design now. Hope to have the design completed and out to bid by the end of the year, and hopefully start construction early next year. I believe we put in a loan amount of $15 million for this project. We hope it doesn't cost that much, but as crazy as costs have been the last couple of years on construction, we just wanted to go high. And then if we don't need it, we've got it. And we don't have to go back and amend our application. So this will be the funding piece of that, and it can go three readings. If anybody has any questions, you can let me know.
Three readings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Nixon. Next, we have Temporary Resolution 41-24, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Prepare and Submit an Application to Participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund Program and to Execute Contracts as Required, coming from Water and Wastewater.
Absolutely. I'll ask Superintendent Drum to speak to this a little more.
Yeah, we've been grappling with this persistent issue on the concentrate line for several years. Our extensive investigations with Arcadis and Division of Water Team have led us to conclude that immediate action is necessary to take care of this problem. As a result, we have divided this project into two crucial parts. The first is the outfall at the corner of Canal and Maple. We are experiencing hydraulic and air entrapment in the Forest Main. The resolution to this problem would be to raise the discharge line to the highest point of the line coming up where Maple Street is. This will alleviate and remove the air entrapment and the hydraulic issue that we're having and experiencing. This project is partially underway. The pre-bid meeting for this project is tomorrow. The second part of this project, for which we request legislation for tonight, is to eliminate the scale and solids accumulating in the line. This is at the South Water Treatment Plant itself. Booster pumps at the South Treatment Plant will eliminate the issue. The current loan cost for this project is $5 million, and we will be looking to receive the loan in October of this year. Again, no suspensions is necessary. If you have questions, would like to know more about this project, and questions arise later, please feel free to give me a call, or if you have questions now.
Thank you. Readings?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That concludes the ordinances. Any other ordinances or resolutions to come before Finance Committee? Hearing none, we'll move over to the ordinances. We have one to bring forward, Temporary Ordinance 12-24, An Ordinance to Accept the Annexation of 45.1 Plus or Minus Acres in Pleasant Township and to Declare an Emergency. This is sponsored by Council of the Whole. And do you have comments on that? Do you wish to make comments?
I...
Or no? Or Law Director will. I didn't know.
That's fine.
Law Director Hall?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So you all have done the initial legislation in order to accept this 45.1 acres up on Sheridan Drive, currently in Pleasant Township. The petitioners have been here. They've spoken in front of you. They have one more hurdle to go in terms of zoning, and that will be at Planning Commission this coming meeting, March Thursday. I can't remember. I apologize. But there will be a public hearing there as well before this comes back to you all. But this ordinance is just to start the final acceptance of that annexation. The county commissioners already granted their petition. Like I said, we're just still moving through that zoning process while we're giving the waiting period. It's time to elapse. So by starting this tonight and reading this three times, I believe the date is April 5th is the earliest that you could pass any legislation to accept the annexation. And so by reading this three times, you'll have it ready to go by April 8th. And then that way, everything will be done. We can send everything off to the Board of Elections and Secretary of State to let them know that this has now been annexed into the city of Lancaster. Anybody has any questions? I'm happy to try and answer those.
So Law Director Hall?
Yes, sir.
In relation to the other ordinance tonight with the zoning, how does that interplay with this one?
So you'll just read the ordinance to amend the zoning map, Temporary Ordinance 824, again tonight. And that'll be the third reading on that, and then you will table it until Planning Commission has a chance to meet and make their recommendation to you.
And then we would have the public hearing tonight on that?
Yes, you can have the public hearing tonight on that, and then they'll have their public hearing as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Three readings. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now we're moving forward to other discussion items, departmental updates. Anybody want to talk? No one wants to speak. Thank you. We'll move on to tonight's meeting prep by President Porter.
Yes, we're going to have a public hearing tonight in relation to Temporary Ordinance 824. And that's an ordinance to... And we're going to start that during the regular meeting.
That's it?
That's it.
Anything else to be brought before the Finance Committee? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Larry Hales? Thank you, Steve. The meeting is adjourned.
Law Director Hall?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to start right at 6:30, since that's when we're noticed?
That's typically what we do. Yeah.
So we will start the regular meeting at 6:30?
Sorry.
If you would rise and join me in a moment of prayer. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things that we can, and finally, the wisdom to know the difference. I call this meeting in the Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers, here. Mr. Ailes.
Here.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Here.
Mrs. Hoop.
Here.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Here.
Mr. Nyheiser. Mr. Schoonover.
Here.
Ms. Teener.
Here.
Mr. Wing.
Here.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Here.
Let the record reflect that nine of the ten members of Lancaster City Council are present. I'd now entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Nyheiser.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Nyheiser.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Nyheiser. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Next to the reading and disposing of the journal.
Regular meeting minutes dated February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Reports of city officials.
Email dated February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four regarding Finance Committee Minutes submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Email dated February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four regarding Finance Committee Minutes submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Email dated February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four regarding Service Committee Agenda submitted by Mr. Ailes. Series of emails regarding CDBG Notice of Funding Availability Public Hearing on March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four submitted by Executive Director Linda Bergy Disser. Series of emails regarding the public hearing for temporary ordinance eleven twenty-four submitted by President Porter. Email dated March seventh, twenty-twenty-four regarding Service Committee Minutes submitted by Mr. Ailes. Email dated March eighth, twenty-twenty-four regarding Finance Committee Agenda submitted by Mr. Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Move on to communications.
Notice to Legislative Authority of the Transfer of a Liquor License from Greg Kuhn, Inc., Doing Business As Greg's Marathon located at ten twenty West Fair Avenue, Lancaster, Ohio, four three one three zero, to R and R Takar Operations, Inc., located at ten twenty West Fair Avenue, Lancaster, Ohio, four three one three zero, submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, six six zero six, Chusing Road, Reynoldsburg, Ohio, four three zero six eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Special presentations and awards. Is there anyone from the Health Department here this evening? Hearing none, we will reschedule that presentation. We'll move to petitions and memorials.
There are none.
Permission of voters and taxpayers to address council. Would there be anybody who would like to come forward to address council at this time? Recognizing we're going to have a public hearing on ordinance eight twenty-four, if you're here for that, we will have those comments during that time. Hearing none, we will move to reports of standing committees.
Finance Committee Meeting Minutes dated February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Service Committee Meeting Minutes dated March first, twenty-twenty-four submitted by Mr. Ailes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Reports of special committees.
There are none.
We will now move on to the public hearing on temporary ordinance eight twenty-four.
An ordinance to amend the city of Lancaster zoning map to change the zoning of zero point nine nine plus or minus acres identified as Fairfield County Auditor Tax Parcel Numbers zero five three five zero six seven three zero zero, zero five three five zero six seven five zero zero, and zero five three five zero six seven five one zero from Central Business District to Service Industrial. Sponsored by Mr. Aylers, coming out of Code Enforcement and Zoning.
Okay. So, tonight's public hearing process is such that if you're here as a proponent to speak, you will be speaking first. We would just ask that you sign in up on the...
Silver?
The silver, the silver clipboard, and then you will have your opportunity to speak in favor of this particular ordinance. Then, we will allow those who are opponents to temporary ordinance eight twenty-four to speak. After that time, we will have rebuttal. Rebuttal would be for anybody who's spoken in favor of the ordinance to come back and rebut anything that has been said during any opposition to the ordinance. And then, after that, you would once again have another rebuttal, but recognizing that you have to speak in the first round to continue speaking. So, at this time, we will have any proponents to come forward. Thank you. If you would just state your name and address for the record as well.
Certainly. I'm Dan Singer. My address is two 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 South Broad Street. I'm here this evening to ask your help. You've been very helpful so far for the rezoning for the property at two oh five Water Street here in Lancaster. We've, we've gone through the process of going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, actually applied for a commercial occupancy permit first, then we went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, went to the Planning Commission, and now we're here. And what we would like to do is change that zoning from Central Business District to Service Industrial. And we, as a, as a matter of that, what we did was, we have approached all of the property owners, the adjacent property owners, all the property owners in the neighborhood, and I supplied a list. If you, anyone wants another copy of it, I have it. And, but if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them. We've been working on the project, and we think that if we have it rezoned to Service Industrial, what it would do would eliminate the variance that we're working with now at this point. And so, with that said, the tenant is here, Mr. Josh Isner, and, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to talk with you about them. Okay?
Yes, and this is not in the historic district at all.
No, it is not in the historic district. It is, if you can recognize or think about Canal Street, which is right along the Hocking River, it is there. High Street dead ends one block from this property to the south.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents for temporary ordinance eight twenty-four? Seeing none, we will now ask, are there any opponents to temporary ordinance eight twenty-four? Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing on temporary ordinance eight twenty-four. So, thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. We'll now move into the reading of resolutions.
A resolution to amend the Three Mels Street Improvement Fund, two zero zero nine, expense budget, and amend the Certificate of Appropriations with the County Auditor. Coming out of Finance, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution twenty-five twenty-four.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution twenty-five twenty-four. Mr. Schoonover, any discussion?
Not for me, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Nyheiser, sorry. Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mrs. Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution twenty-nine twenty-four.
A resolution to amend the certificate with the County Auditor, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the wastewater fund, six zero zero four, and in the wastewater utility reserve fund, six zero two nine. Coming out of Water Water Pollution Control, sponsored by Mr. Wing, seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution numbered twenty-nine twenty-four.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution twenty-nine twenty-four. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Yes, briefly, Mr. President, thank you. Both of these are annual pieces, and this one allows them to spend money on capital projects.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution twenty-nine twenty-four passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution thirty twenty-four.
A resolution to increase receipts, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, and amend the certificate with the County Auditor in the wastewater replace and improvement fund, six zero two three. Coming out of Water Water Pollution Control, sponsored by Mr. Wing, seconded by Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record the resolution temporarily numbered thirty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution thirty twenty-four. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Nothing bad.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution thirty twenty-four passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution thirty-one twenty-four.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate with the County Auditor in the General Fund, one zero zero one. Coming out of Finance, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Aylers.
Councilmember Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution thirty-one twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution thirty-one twenty-four. Any discussion, Councilmember Schoonover?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution thirty-one twenty-four passes nine to zero. There are no resolutions for second reading this evening. We will now move on to first reading of temporary resolution forty twenty-four.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Program and to execute contracts as required. Coming out of Water Water Pollution Control, sponsored by Mr. Wing, seconded by Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution forty twenty-four. Temporary resolution forty-one twenty-four.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund Program and to execute contracts as required. Coming out of Water Water Pollution Control, sponsored by Mr. Wing, seconded by Mrs. By Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution forty-one twenty-four. Are there any further resolutions to come before council this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to reading of ordinances. There are no ordinances for third reading. We'll move on to the second reading, temporary ordinance eleven twenty-four.
An ordinance to amend the city of Lancaster zoning map to change the zoning of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty-five point one eight square feet plus or minus identified as Fairfield County Auditor Tax Parcel Numbers zero five three six one eight nine three zero zero, and zero five three six one eight nine four zero zero, from Service Industrial to Commercial Neighborhood. Sponsored by Code Enforcement and Zoning, sorry, coming out of Code Enforcement and Zoning, sponsored by Mr. Aylers and seconded by Ms. Whoop, Mrs. Hoop.
Councilmember Aylers.
This will be the second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance, ordinance eleven twenty-four. We will now move on to first reading of ordinances, temporary ordinance twelve twenty-four.
An ordinance to accept the annexation of forty-five point one plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. Coming out of council at the whole, sponsored by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Ms. Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance twelve twenty-four. Tabled legislation, do we have any tabled legislation to come before council this evening?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, that council remove from the table temporary ordinance eight twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to remove from the table temporary ordinance eight twenty-four. This is a non-debatable motion, and we will call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bizcheck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to remove from the table temporary ordinance eight twenty-four passes nine to zero. Councilmember Aylers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance eight twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance eight twenty-four. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Aylers.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bischeck.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 824 passes nine to zero. Do we have any other ordinances to come before council this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. There doesn't appear to be any new business, no further. Announcement of scheduled meetings.
Regular sessions of council, March 25th at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers, April 8th at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers. No upcoming special meetings. Upcoming committee meetings for the next 30 days. Administrative services meeting, March 20th at 8 a.m. in City Hall, 1897 conference room. Water-water pollution control on March 22nd at 7:30 a.m. City Hall, 1897 conference room. Finance, March 25th at 6 p.m. here in council chambers. Safety Committee, April 5th at 8 a.m. City Hall, 1897 conference room. Finance, April 8th at 6 p.m. Council Chambers. Code and zoning committee, April 8th at 8 a.m. City Hall, 1897 conference room.
Thank you. Move on to reading of bills.
MNCO for 8423 for the publication of legislation. MNCO for $114.52 for the publication of public hearing. Total for MNCO, $198.75. CDW government, $206.14 for the purchase of 11 computer mouses.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We have no need for an executive session this evening. I would just remind all council members, if you had any legislation, to stick around and sign, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Sorry, she distracted me.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second.
I wasn't listening, sir.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn.
Everyone's in a hurry, I get it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for those in attendance this evening.
Thank you, Joe.